Hey, Lawrence Swan, can you hear me?
We can hear you in the chamber.
Okay, thank you, just checking for audio, thank you.
You're welcome, we can see you very well, too.
Okay.
Luis, can you let them know that if they plan on speaking, that's gonna be the next item up? We're gonna call them in order that I have the slips here. I need a waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances on the agenda this evening?
So moved.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by, I have a motion, I think I have two motions, who wants the, who wants the second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Loa with the second, Ms. Benton Court with the motion. Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Benton Court?
Yes?
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
And Mayor Hafar?
Here. So the record will show Ms. Benton Court's participating by phone and Mr. Carrillo's participating by video conference. So do a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence in honor of our troops. Can you please stand and join with me? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. And I've got the invisible liberty of justice. Thank you. Okay. Luis, can you let them know that if they plan on speaking, that's gonna be the next item up? We're gonna call them in order that I have the slips here. I need a waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances on the agenda this evening?
So moved.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by, I have a motion, I think I have two motions, who wants the, who wants the second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Loa with the second, Ms. Benton Court with the motion. Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Benton Court?
Yes?
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Here, I mean, yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now's the time for public comments, if you wish to speak on matters on the agenda or not on the agenda, within the jurisdiction of the city council, if you're attending a meeting by phone, you gotta press star nine to raise your hand, if you're attending by personal computer, click the raise your hand button and then star six to unmute, IT, if you're on a phone, IT will call the last four numbers of your, of your phone number to queue you up. And, let me see here. Can we find out if this is the sum total of our speakers this evening? Did you double check it out, Luis, or somebody? Silent to do here?
You've got one on the phone for you as well, mayor.
Okay. Okay, IT, you have two calls? Okay, what's the first one, sir? Lisa Kraft? Is that what you said, sir? Lisa Kraft, you there?
Yes.
Hi, go ahead, ma'am. Which, which agenda, which agenda item is this?
This is a comment, this is something that doesn't have to do with any of the agenda items.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, I've read to the very fine that the city sold a Joshua Tree woodland to Amazon on 10th Street West and Avenue M in Mary. If this is true, please make this public knowledge soon. Thank you for your service, have a good evening.
Thank you, yeah, there was a property that was sold, that name hadn't come up in the discussions to my knowledge. So, but the state has mitigations that they have, anytime there's any trees involved, anywhere, whether it's in your yard or on a large parcel, so that will be well and adequately addressed. Okay, who've you got?
Participant with a phone number ending in two six zero, we will be unmuting your microphone.
Okay, if your phone number is two six zero. Are you there, two six zero?
Hi, good evening, city council, this is Kimberly Pichitas.
Hi, what's, what, what item, what item number are you speaking on, or is this non-agenda?
This is non-agenda.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so hi, hi, city council, my name is Kimberly Pichitas. I am a Palmdale resident and I am speaking today in response to the previous public comments made in the past few months regarding smoke ha, secondhand smoke exposure in Palmdale. I appreciate the work that the organization is doing to advocate for more smoke-free areas, but the support of the city council is needed to make it an efficient change. My ask is for the city council to please consider addendising an update on the current smoking ordinance or city, so our city can benefit from smoke-free outdoor dining area, sidewalks and outdoor work sites. COVID has shown me how strong our community is and we can only get better, get stronger, so thank you.
Thank you very much. IT, you have anybody else?
Not at this time, mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the, the. Excuse me, I'll handle this, thank you, sir. So we'll go ahead and close the IT comments, the phone and IT comments. City clerk, do you have any on your agenda there?
So one we do for Mr. Zink. And I have two more here.
Okay, do you have any on the online?
No.
No, okay, we'll close the online comments at this time. I have Mr. Zink.
Jason Zink, I just want to remind the council on the agenda, if you feel like it's non-agenda, we accept it. From consent calendar, and I also think it should say public comment on new business items, because a lot of these people have never been to a council meeting. I think it's just common courtesy to let them know that this is their time to have other comment during business items. Also, the California Forward Economic Summit, California State Economic Summit is November ninth and tenth. I hope somebody from Palmdale will be there to represent us. It's a shame that we haven't showed up in five years since they've been doing it. We need a study of the suffering of the fifty thousand commuters who commute down to LA, a mental health study, and to show the environmental impact of people driving down there, in congestion, smog and everything. We could use this as green policy to create jobs up here and create an Antelope Valley econom, uh, opportunity zone, a state opportunity zone and county opportunity zone, and we should focus on that. Fifty thousand people are suffering four hours a day needlessly, in my opinion, because we have no policy to drive incentives to Antelope Valley.
Would that include the twenty-two thousand that drive up here every day?
Well, I'm just saying, there's a, there's a better way to live life than four hours on the road. Also, there is no air doctor, here, air specialist doctor for all the Medi-Cal people up here in Antelope Valley. You have to go all the way to All of You or USC in LA, that's wrong, the way the county is doing us. Also, I'd like to see American flags on Sierra Highway from R to Avenue Q to the sheriff's station for Veterans Day. I'd like to see balloon floats for the Christmas parade. I'd like to see. I'd like to see a resolution declared by this city council, declaring that natural immunity is real and that we start testing for antibodies with city employees. That was the biggest mistake, is President Trump and Biden did not test for antibodies, people that have antibodies. It's just like chickenpox, once you get COVID, it's very rare that you get it again. So we should test people for antibodies, why are we giving the shot that could save somebody somewhere else when the person already has antibodies? It's ridiculous, it's a waste of taxpayers' money. And also, I read in the paper, twenty-five percent of the, if you take the vaccine in the city, if you're a city employee, twenty-five percent of the time you get to spend at home, isn't, that doesn't make any sense. It should be the people that aren't vaccinated get to stay at home, right?
I agree with you.
So that, that's, that's, that's crazy, that's almost like creating second class of workers within the city.
I don't understand it.
I don't understand that either, but you guys are the boss of the city manager, so I think you guys need to tell them, that's not a good policy, that's making other people feel less than a worker.
Thank you very much, Jason. Okay, I have, oh, Cam, okay, is it? Cam Anderson?
Anderson, hello. Good evening, gentlemen of the council.
Wait, I gotta, wait, hold on, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. So I'm here on behalf of Eleventh Street East. So I wanted to just read what I wrote. We, the residents of three eight two two zero, Eleventh Street East, are very concerned with how fast and reckless people drive up and down Eleventh Street. On September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, at eight ten AM, Leanne Doe of our address number six, apartment number six, was violently hit by a reckless driver on our street. Not only was she hit at a high speed, but the car drug her several feet up the street before leaving her dead. The driver did not stop and call nine one one, there's an investigation being done. But she was left on the road dead. What we want to do to resolve the issue of, oh, I wanted to add that just even a regular driver, because she was hit in the morning, so just like a regular driver during the day, you know, with the sun glaring in your eyes, there's no speed bumps, there's no crosswalks, there's nothing. And it's a long stre, stretch of road, right? So what's gonna happen is someone could accidentally hit someone just driving regularly and they might think, oh, you know, I don't want to go to jail for thirty years for this.
Okay, did you have something here you want to show us?
I do, yes. Okay, so this is Palmdale Boulevard and this is heading east and west. This is Eleventh Street, this is north and southbound. Right here is Q twelve. So where we're having a problem is in this area. Now, after Q twelve, there's a huge dip here, so this slows cars down. So we're having like racing at night and people just riding motorcycles and, you know, just about three weeks ago, someone had told me and my daughter and my dog that we could pass and stopped for us and as we were walking by, someone flew around them going forty and almost hit, actually hit me. And then a week later was when this woman was, was basically murder, manslaughter. So what I'm proposing or asking is if you would consider either a stop sign, a speed bump or some kind of crosswalk signal in these three areas, which you have one right before La Quinta Apartments that would go straight across.
Let me help you with this, we got public works, public works here? So you see the gentleman waving his hand back there? Okay, he's gonna be the guy that's gonna have to look at this with his traffic engineer. Also, Mr. Heffernan, if you could take that to him and show it to him, that he'll get back to us and get back to you and let us know, and, and he will also share that with the sheriff's department, because we have a traffic task force that's dealing with some of these issues right now.
And may I give you the position?
Yes, give that, please, give that to the city clerk and she'll distribute it to us.
Okay, you're wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You too. Okay. Luis, do we have any more speaker slips?
We've got about four here.
Four here, all right.
Is everyone being told that if they want to speak, they fill out a slip and they'll be allowed to speak? So, okay. I, I'm concerned that we've sent out the wrong message in terms of limiting the amount of people that wish to speak on whatever topic they wish to speak on.
Yeah, that was never said.
And well, I was told, I was told that we were going to allow people three at a time. This chamber has been full almost every single council meeting. The public has a right to address this council.
Absolutely, they do.
Uh, that will be well and adequately addressed. Okay, uh, who've you got?
Participant with a phone number ending in two, six, zero. We will be unmuting your microphone.
Okay, if your phone number is two, six, zero. Are you there? Two, six, zero.
Hi, good evening, City Council. This is Kimberly Piches.
Hi, what's, what, what I, what item number are you speaking on, or is this non-agenda?
This is non-agenda.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so hi, hi, City Council. My name is Kimberly Piches. I am a Palmdale resident and I am speaking today in response to the previous public comments made in the past few months regarding smoke ha- secondhand smoke exposure in Palmdale. Uh, I appreciate the work that the organization is doing to advocate for more smoke-free areas, but the support of the City Council is needed to make it an efficient change. My ask, um, is for the City Council to please consider uh, addendising an update on the current smoking ordinance, or city, so our city can benefit from smoke-free outdoor dining areas, sidewalks, and outdoor work sites. COVID has shown me how strong our community is and we can only get better, get stronger, so thank you.
Thank you very much. IT, you have anybody else?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the, uh, the, uh, um, excuse me, I'll handle this. Thank you, sir. Um, so we'll go ahead and close the IT comments, the phone and IT comments. Um, City Clerk, do you have any on your agenda there?
So one that I do for Mr. Zink. And I have two more here.
Okay, do you have any on the online? No? Okay, we'll close the online comments at this time. I have, uh, Mr. Zink.
Uh, Jason Zink, I just want to remind the, uh, council on the agenda, if you feel like, uh, non-agenda, you can accept it. From consent calendar, and I also think it should say public comment on new business items, because a lot of these people have never been to a council meeting. I think it's just common courtesy to let them know that this is their time to have other comment during, uh, business items. Also, the California Forward Economic Summit, California State Economic Summit is November ninth and tenth. I hope somebody from Palmdale will be there to represent us. Uh, it's a shame that we haven't showed up in five years since they've been doing it. We need a study of the suffering of the fifty thousand commuters who commute down to LA, a mental, uh, health study, and to show the, uh, the environmental impact of, uh, people driving down there in congestion, smog, and everything. We could use this as green policy to create jobs up here and create an Antelope Valley econom- uh, a- a- opportunity zone, a state opportunity zone, and county opportunity zone. And we should focus on that. Fifty thousand people are suffering four hours a day needlessly, in my opinion, because we have no policy to drive incentives to Antelope Valley.
Would that include the twenty-two thousand that drive up here every day?
Well, I'm just saying, there's a be- there's a better way to live life than four hours on the road. Uh, also, there is no air doctor, here, air specialist doctor for all the Medi-Cal people up here in Antelope Valley. You have to go all the way to All of You or USC in LA. That's wrong, the way the county is doing us. Uh, also, I'd like to see American flags, uh, there on Sierra Highway from R to Avenue Q to the Sheriff's Station for Veterans Day. I'd like to see balloon, balloon floats for the Christmas parade. Uh, I'd like to see, uh, I'd like to see, uh, a resolution declared by this City Council declaring that natural immunity is real and that we start testing for antibodies with city employees. That was the biggest mistake is President Trump and Biden did not test for antibodies, people that have antibodies. It's just like chickenpox. Once you get, uh, COVID, it's very rare that you get it again. So we should test people for antibodies. Why are we giving the shot that could save somebody somewhere else when the person already has antibodies? It's ridiculous. It's a waste of taxpayers' money. And also, I read in the paper, twenty-five percent of the, uh, if you take the vaccine in this city, if you're a city employee, twenty-five percent, uh, of the time you get to spend at home. Isn't that, that doesn't make any sense. It should be the people that aren't vaccinated get to stay at home, right?
I agree with you.
So that, that's, that's, that's cra- that's almost like creating second class of workers within the city.
I don't understand it.
That, I don't understand that either, but you guys are the boss of the city manager, so I think you guys, you need to tell them, that's not a good policy. That's making other people feel less than a worker.
Thank you very much, Jason. Okay, I have, um, oh, Cam, okay, is it? Cam Anderson?
Anderson, hello. Good evening, gentlemen of the council.
Wait, I gotta, wait, hold on. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Um, so I'm here on behalf of, um, Eleventh Street East. Um, so I wanted to just read what I wrote. Um, we, the residents of three, eight, two, two, zero, Eleventh Street East are very concerned with how fast and reckless people drive up and down Eleventh Street. On September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, at eight-ten AM, Leanne Doe of our address, number six, apartment number six, was violently hit by a reckless driver on our street. Not only was she hit at a high speed, but the car drug her several feet up the street before leaving her dead. Um, the driver did not stop and call nine-one-one. Um, there's an investigation being done. Um, but she was left on the road dead. Um, we, what we want to do to resolve the issue of, oh, I wanted to add that, um, just even a regular driver, because she was hit in the morning, so just like a regular driver during the day, you know, with the sun glaring in your eyes, there's no speed bumps, there's no crosswalks, there's nothing, and it's a long str- stretch of road, right? So what's gonna happen is someone could accidentally hit someone just driving regularly, and they might think, oh, you know, I don't want to go to jail for thirty years for this.
Okay, did you have a something here you want to show us?
I do, yes. Um, okay, so this is Palmdale Boulevard, and this is heading east and west. This is Eleventh Street. This is north and southbound.
Right.
Right here is Q twelve.
Right.
So where we're having a problem is in this area. Now, after Q twelve, there's a huge dip here, so this slows cars down. So we're having, like, uh, racing at night and people just riding motorcycles and, you know, um, just about three weeks ago, someone had told me and my daughter and my dog that we could pass and stopped for us, and as we were walking by, someone flew around them going forty and almost hit, actually hit me.
Yeah.
And then a week later was when this woman was, was basically murder, uh, manslaughter. So, um, what I'm proposing or asking is if you would consider, um, either a stop sign, a speed bump, or some kind of crosswalk signal in these three areas, which you have one right before La Quinta Apartments that would go straight across.
Let, let me help you with this. Uh, we got Public Works, is Public Works here?
Yeah, back there.
So you see the gentleman waving his hand back there? Okay, he's gonna be the guy that's gonna have to look at this with his traffic engineer. Also, Mr. Heffernan, if you could take that to him and show it to him, that he'll get back to us and get back to you and let us know, and it, and he will also share that with the Sheriff's Department, because we have a traffic task force that's dealing with some of these issues right now.
And may I give you the position?
Yes, give that, please, give that to the City Clerk and then she'll distribute it to us.
Okay, you're wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You too. Okay. Luis, do we have any more speaker slips?
We've got about four here.
Four here? Alright.
Is everyone being told that if they want to speak, they fill out a slip and they'll be allowed to speak? So, okay.
Right.
I, I'm concerned that we've sent out the wrong message in terms of limiting the, uh, amount of people that wish to speak on whatever topic they wish to speak on.
Yeah, that was never said.
Well, I, I was told, I was told that we were going to allow people three at a time. This chamber has been full almost every single council meeting. The public has a right to address this council.
Absolutely, they do.
And I just want to make sure that we have not stopped anyone from speaking that wishes to speak.
The, the only, that was on the suggestion of the deputy, because they had no other deputies. So he said, let's limit it, because he didn't have any other bodies, okay?
Alright.
So when that situation changed, we sent the other message, so come on in.
And, and Mayor, and Councilman, we've also have staff outside asking folks if they would like to speak, letting folks know the theft order mask, that they're welcome to come inside.
And they're being offered slips to the, okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so if we could pass those down so I can call them up?
Okay.
There's plenty of seats, uh, ladies and gentlemen, over here.
Thanks. Alright. So we're gonna go get the first couple of people queued up here so we can, um, kind of move this along if we can, try to maintain a little bit of order here and keep everybody moving. Uh, Alina Schofeld will be first, and Alina Schofeld will be followed by David Akers, and David Akers will be followed by Christine Lee. Okay, so if you want to line up in the aisle here. So, Alina?
Yes, sir.
And then, and then we get the, uh, get the other two there, and...
Good evening, everyone. Um, I just have three questions. One is, what is your role in ensuring proper policing for the residents of Palmdale? Two, you stated, um, Mayor Hoffire, that many individuals drive up the fourteen to jobs here in Palmdale. What measures are in place to give Palmdale residents first preference, um, or dibs on jobs in Palmdale? I know they do it in DC where I'm from. Um, they have a policy where people in DC, if they have, uh, if they live there, they have first preference in jobs. Um, and three, redistricting is under, um, underway. What are the plans to engage the entire population of Palmdale, other, what's the process? Um, what do you have, um, in place to engage everybody, um, and not banking on public in ignorance? And, um, rather than just public announcements and Zoom meetings? And, um, also, I just want to invite everybody out on Sunday. I ha- I paid for it myself to have a citywide prayer. I'm praying for you. All the, um, residents in Palmdale, Sunday, October twenty-fourth, eleven to three, Apostleon Square. God bless.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, there, uh, just to answer your question on the, there, there's meetings going on all around the city. They're being, uh, they're being conducted at Parks and Recs buildings, uh, and things of that nature, so there's at least one meeting in every single district that's going on.
But how are we disseminating that information to maybe populations of interest?
Right.
Okay, that aren't aware of it or pretty of that.
Right. Okay, uh, who's, who's our expert on that? So you could probably talk, the City Clerk will publish that information, so you could contact her later, okay? And she can give you the, the specifics on that. Thank you very much. David? How you doing, sir?
Doing well.
How are you?
Little tired. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to thank you for taking time to discuss an issue of great importance to our community. And that is whether forces outside Palmdale can create two classes of citizens and through such discrimination coerce people into injecting their bodies against their will. My sincere hope is at least three or four of you oppose vaccines and discriminating based on medical choice, but I'm not certain where you stand. The time for staying silent and passing the blame is over. You either stand against government overreach, or you're part of it. I expect to hear excuses tonight during this discussion about how the county or state has authority and you can do nothing. If that is what you believe, step down now. You might as well hand your seat over to some Orwellian bureaucrat to sit down and dictate rules from Big Brother and Big Sister. What's your purpose? If we're to be ruled over by the monstrous county and state governments, why does the city even exist? What's your purpose? Let me remind you of your purpose. This is the Charter of the City of Palmdale. Some of your signatures are on here. It states, "We, the people of the City of Palmdale, declare our intent to restore to our community the historic principles of self-governance inherent in the doctrine of home rule." Do you understand what home rule means? This is our home. We make the rules.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. There may be people that feel differently. We want to make sure everybody gets the opportunity to talk and nobody feels intimidated. So let's just try to, we, I understand the enthusiasm and I appreciate it. You not say anything, I don't, I don't believe either, so let, but let's just, you know, okay, thanks, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Palmdale citizens come first. We are not part of the LA County Collective. You work for us, not for them. I also suspect that we may hear weak proposals such as, "The city won't mandate anything, but businesses are free to do what they choose." Are they? Do businesses have rights or people? I am certain if a business in town tried to deny service to a minority group, all of you would fight each other to get to the mic room first to condemn it, then work together to shut it down. Why? Because it's against the Constitution? No, because you did little to Palmdale faith communities when we were denied the right to worship. But you would step up because discrimination is wrong, and there would be a public outcry. We are here tonight to show that vaccine passports and vaccine mandates are wrong, and there is a public outcry. Thank you.
We understand. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, it, uh, next up is, um, let me get the sheet here. I got Christina Lee, then after Christina, we're gonna have Mario Presents, and then Rich Gallego, okay?
Hi. I'm Christina.
Good evening.
Um, to the, everybody in here, also, um, I'm sixty years of age, and two thousand and five, I disobeyed my mother one time in my life, and my father. I got a flu shot, and do you know what happened to me? I was paralyzed from chest down. It's been sixteen years since it happened to me. I look good on the outside. I can do a lot. I can do a lot than the average person can, but the inside, I'm a mess, physically a mess. I've seen neurologists, I've seen so many specialists, I have had so many blood draws, my veins are scarred. Scarred. It's so hard to get a needle in me. I have gone through medication, medication, Lyrica. Don't let anybody you know go on Lyrica. That destroys your brain. It destroys everything about you. I'm on medication now for anxiety because of all the procedures I have gone through. This is all from a stupid little flu shot that I disobeyed my mother on. We're now forty-five! You think I would, I'm a grown woman. You would think I can make my own choices. But my mom said, "Don't do it," because she worked for Kaiser Hospital, and she saw folks all the time being injured from vaccinations. Do you know how difficult it is to prove that you've been injured by a vaccination? Do you have any idea? No, you don't. No, you do not. I'm in the hospital, they asked me six questions. I will not divulge those six questions. I can tell you right now. It's so hard to pass those six questions. And then I've had so many blood draws, so many, for four years, and so many pokes in my body. From USC to UCLA to Cedar Sinai, I've had the top doctors. Thank you, Lord, that my husband has had a fantastic job, a career, that has let me see the top professionals. But I could not take care of my own body until after the federal government said, yes, that it was the vaccine that did it, because my body was so clean. No one believed that it was me proven in my favor. No one believed that it was, but my body was so clean. But it took four years to prove, and then after that was done, I was on my own. I started seeing phenomenal acupuncturists and acting, seeing her for ten years. Oh my gosh, the clothes I could not put on. Do you know how happy it is to put on a pair of Levi's five-oh-ones? Seriously, your favorite jeans that you can't wear anymore, your favorite tennis shoes you can't wear. You won't get it, but you wo- women do. Your favorite high heels, can't wear them anymore. Dresses?
Well, you're assuming that we don't know, nevermind.
No, you don't know, dude. I hope you don't know.
Time.
That's one of the questions.
Just saying.
They're just gonna be asking you that once. One of the questions they'll be asking you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm all good. I'm all good. So I'm saying is, do you know any people I hear on a regular basis that are?
Time's up, ma'am.
Pardon?
Okay. You hit the, you hit the clock.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Mandates. I have a, I have a little lovely bracelet here that says, "I cannot have any more vaccinations." Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we're gonna have, uh, Morris Presents, then Rich Gallego, and then Yul Gavargas. What are you wearing, Mario? See what I tell you? How you doing, Mario?
Good, good.
Good to see you again.
Likewise. Good evening, Palmdale City Council. My name is Mario Presents. Um, I'm an active member in the community. I'm also an active activist in Los Angeles. Um, I want to tell you guys a story about my sister, who I just found out I had one last year. Um, when we discussed privately about these vaccines and what happened, she disclosed to me that she had SARS, the bird flu. She was hospitalized for it. It almost killed her. Then they convinced her to take this experimental vaccine, because you survive SARS. You should take this vaccine. It's gonna boost your immune system. It hospitalized her too. It almost killed her. I wouldn't have a sister today if she had died. Um, alternative treatments exist, but no one wants to talk about them. Natural immunity isn't discussed because that's how the smallpox vaccine was invented. We learned about the milkmaids in elementary school. Those vaccines that we called vaccines, those weren't vaccines, they were inoculations. We let the body develop its own immunities using a similar virus, and we didn't force people to have that. Ignoring adverse reactions is harmful, because stories like my sister's get suppressed. We don't live in George Orwell's nineteen eighty-four quite yet, but the censorship I'm seeing around this vaccine, around the adverse reactions, around COVID, is terrifying. Vaccine mandates are intrusive with regards to medical information, and the push to get a jab in every arm has a consequence. Gays learned about untested treatments from Dr. Fauci when he used AZT on our community and killed thousands. Now we are allowing this same scientist to encourage, bribe, and, um, and mandate the American people into this experiment. We, the people of Palmdale, say absolutely not. We want you to protect us using the city's charter, but if you do not protect us, the people will remove you, because your appointment is, your appointment is at our will. The government works for us and not the other way around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mario. I have, uh, Rich? Gallego?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, uh, Rich Gallego. Um, I'm hoping that you guys will prove Cicero wrong when he said that politicians are not born, they're excreted. And I, I sincerely hope that you will prove him wrong, because we elect you, gentlemen, to do the things that you do on our behalf. And I want to tell you first that, um, I had a thirty-year career working in an immunology lab at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, the last eighteen of which I was the supervisor of that lab. And when people tell me that I have to put on a mask that it's gonna protect me from COVID virus, it's laughable. And the reason it's laughable is, first of all, most of the people you say work, see wearing masks, they're cloth masks, bandanas, all kinds of things out in public. In an operating theater or an isolation ward, people wearing properly fitted N-ninety-fives, they have more protection. But they also have things like germicidal wipes on all the surfaces whenever they're not being used. They have HEPA filtration, they have, um, UV lighting, bathing every surface when it's not in use. They have people putting the masks on for them, and they use them in that situation, and when they leave, they take it off. And if they have to re-enter, they put a new one on. In a public setting, that's not what's happening. It is laughable to think that any of these things do a single thing to protect us from COVID. They don't. And I, for one, am tired of bowing down to stupidity, because that's what it is. This is a placebo at best. And I think you all know it, because I see you pulling them down, not wearing them at all. I'm cool with that, because I know what they do and don't do. As for the vaccines, religious grounds, I'm against abortion, I don't want to use anything that was derived from aborted fetal tissue. Alright, Constitution says I have that right. Constitution also says that I can't be denied my liberties without due course of law. And forcing people not to work, not enabling their kids to go to school unless they get vaccinated, creating a tiered society based on vaccination sta- status, is abhorrent. I can't find any, any reasonable defense for it. This is an a- attempted takeover of our civil liberties, nothing else. This has never been about medical science, this has always been about social science. And I'm pretty sure you all recognize it. So I'm urging you to vote yes on the ordinance that the Palmdale Freedom Coalition has submitted to you. Now, does that mean that's gonna fix everything? Or is the county or the state gonna come and knock on Palmdale City Hall and say, "We're suing you"? Or we're gonna keep funds from you? And I get that, you know, your constituents elect you doing things that you promised to do, and if you don't have the funding, it makes it very difficult. But you have to decide if you're gonna stand up to the Constitution and the people that you are elected to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I've got Yul Gavargas.
What about this lady?
She's in a pile.
Okay.
I got Yul Gavargas, then I've got Pastor, uh, Lavelle Fleming, and... Gotta give me somebody to identify you here. And, uh, Mr. Myself or Ms. Myself or whatever, so whoever that, fill that one out, said Myself, that'd be the third person, so. Yul?
Good evening, uh, Mayor and, uh, honorable members of the council. Uh, most of you know me. I've been here for fifty-two years. I'm the most loving guy, and I'm always, always more than happy to help everyone. I never turn my back on anyone. I'm not a terrorist, as you know well, and this really, uh, forced mandatory vaccine really, uh, it's, I don't think it's a good idea. Uh, when I had my first child, you've met him, he's gonna be twenty now, and he got autism since he was fifteen months old. I listened to the good doctor, he says, "Vaccines." And, uh, he got, I have hepatitis, and he got this and that, and then when it came to MMR vaccine, he showed adverse reaction. He had respiratory illness. He ended up in Antelope Valley, uh, Hospital in Lancaster. An autism came in, and he's condemned for life of autism. Can- cannot communicate very well, can never hold a job, and his younger brother and his younger sister have to take care of him. Now, some people were telling me, "Yul, that's what you get having a child at your age." Well, the other two came when I got older. "Oh, Yul, that's what you get." This is for, uh, people Assyrians, Middle Easterns like you, people have autism. When I went to Orange Bowl, and, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Pasadena, Pasadena, Rose Bowl, there were fifty thousand of us from Philippines, we had black, white, brown, and autism doesn't know no race, and it happened to us. And now my kids have this autoimmune disorder. It's in our system. If you force them to get the vaccine, you might have more autism in my family. Melania is perfectly healthy, you met her. Elia is perfectly healthy, straight A student, Palmdale, uh, Air Force Academy, straight A, both of them. And my oldest one is condemned. One more, real quick, about this chipaway, your freedoms. In nineteen thirteen, Ottoman Turks, they said, "Christians, bad." One and a half million Armenians were massacred. Assyrians, nine hundred thousand of us, six hundred thousand Greeks. Then it came nineteen thirty-two, my, my, my parents escaped to Russia. Stalin said, "These are bad, those are bad." Twenty million Russians were massacred, so they escaped to Iran. Then, and when I was, I was born in forty-nine in Iran, in nineteen seventy-one, I had to escape, because some of these, uh, uh, remember Iranians are awesome people, but some of these ayatollahs, excuse me, Jews bad, Israel bad, America, the Satan, Yankee go home. So I come here, land of the free, I love this country, and I love my freedom. Please don't take it away from us.
Thank you Yul. Alright, so we're gonna have, uh, is this Myself from Lancaster, from J-11? Where did I miss?
Pastor.
Oh, Pastor Lovell, and then whoever this is, uh, from, um, Avenue J-11 in Lancaster, and then after that is Amanda Palmer, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Pastor, thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you. Uh, just wanna th- thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, one thing I just wanted to say that I'm just asking you all to, you know, uh, pass this ordinance. Um, coming to Palmdale from the valley, having my family here, being able to work here, work with the city, it's been outstanding. It's been a dream of mine to be able to know the mayor, to be able to do, uh, engagement, help our young people, and it's been an honor being here. And so, uh, my request is to, you know, pass an ordinance where we can truly be a place to call home. I know that's our title of our, in our theme, and it has been that for me, and so I'm asking you to hold the line, to, um, stand up for us, continue to stand for us, and to also know I'm not just asking you to do it, but letting you know that you have me and you have the rest of us to stand there with you in the fight. Uh, because one thing I've noticed is we got a lot of warriors in the valley. And so, we'll, we'll, we'll stand with you. And so if you don't mind, I can take like thirty seconds, I just wanna pray for you, if that's okay?
We got another minute and a half to go.
Okay.
All yours.
Yeah, and look, and being a pastor, I'm actually nervous speaking, that's weird, but, uh, yeah, that's weird.
We don't believe you.
But, yeah, but one thing, Lord, I thank you, Lord God, for the city council, our mayor. I pray, Lord God, for their, uh, physical bodies, for their minds, their spirit, and Lord God, I know we're asking them to do a lot, but, uh, Lord, I believe that you placed them for such a time as this, and so I'm asking, Lord God, that you give them the peace, the resolve, the strategy, and the courage, Lord God, to continue to make Palmdale a place called home. And God, we give you praise and we give you glory for the strength and wisdom, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Pastor.
I put on J-11.
You're J-11, okay.
I thought for sure that I put my name on there.
It just says Myself, is this yours? That's yours, okay. There you go.
I'm Scott Sutherland, I'm from Lancaster, and, uh, I signed my Declaration of Independence last, uh, week and a half ago by telling the employer that I was not going to comply with the mandates. So I've been suspended from the workplace without pay. It took them exactly thirty, thirty minutes to do that. And I'm here because I'm asking you to sign your own Declaration of Independence. The governor of California can issue, uh, an executive order, but only you can issue a mandate. You are the ones that will be on the hook. If someone is shot with this injection, a child gets myocarditis and dies, if somebody who has medical complications that you don't have the right to know about ends up getting sick and die, or gets sick with adverse reactions and can't work anymore, you're going to have to meet your maker at some point and be held accountable for that. Now, if you leave every one of us the freedom to make our own choice, then our, our own accountability will be before him. And I'm asking you not to take on the responsibility for the health of any of the citizens of this, of this city. I'm asking you to leave that between them and their doctors and their God. Thank you.
We got Amanda Palmer, then Sherri Rogers, then Mickey Martinez. I'm just going through this list just like we got them, so. Hi Amanda.
Hi, um, so I, there's a few things I wanna talk about, uh, in regard to the last, uh, city council meeting. Uh, there was a Palmdale Tourism Committee that came, and they were speaking on that, and I thought that it was a good idea for us to not require these mandates when they, when, you know, we want tourists to come from, you know, surrounding areas, and if we have this freedom here, I think that can attract them. So, um, also, um, I know about the property over there on MN 30th, or no, MN Sierra Highway, the big piece of property, city property that's gonna be sold, and I just wanna say, I hope that we can make, uh, a good decision so that we can save the Joshua trees over there as well. But, um, then also, the last time the mayor mentioned that the state of California is imposing certain regulations to put more residents in a smaller space, um, okay, so you know what I'm talking about, but, um, and I was wondering why our city attorney doesn't defend us against those illegal, um, regulations. Um, I'm not sure, are you here to, uh, serve the community here or to serve the state, if you're allowed to answer that?
City Palmdale's my client.
Okay, good. That's nice to hear. Um, and then, um, on the man-
There's challenges going on on that all over the state right now, so we'll stand by.
Oh, good. And then on the mandates, uh, I'm a teacher, and I'm worried about losing my job. I don't want to get the vaccine. I have a lot of reasons why I don't wanna get the vaccine. Um, one reason is because I'm into natural medicine, if I can do anything that I can to approach, uh, you know, uh, anything in a natural way, I try my best to do that. You know, even my husband in the audience, he, you know, he has to convince me to take a aspirin when I have a headache, but I'm like, "No, let me, let me take a nap, let me drink some water, let me make sure I had, you know, enough, you know." But, um, one time though, I made a medical decision that went against my beliefs. Not just spiritual, but also, you know, my philosophical beliefs on medicine, and I ended up in a class action lawsuit against a medical company due, due to the traumatic experience that I went through because of that device that had to be surgically removed. And this was approved by the FDA, a device that was approved by the FDA. And so, um, now, that's not gonna fly with my employer though, and I just hope that we can set a precedent here in the city of Palmdale so that we can, um, hopefully, people will see us and desire, um, to fight for their freedoms and to fight for their rights. I don't like to be in the position is, if you get, if you don't get this vaccine, then you can't, you can't do the job that you love. I love teaching, my students love me, but I love my autonomy over my body more. Thank you for listening.
Let's, let's watch that so that somebody may feel differently, and then they get intimidated, then they don't wanna talk, okay? So we wanna give everybody a fair shot. So I got Butler's Coffee, then I got the rep, whoever that is, a rep from there, then, uh, Galenia Davis, and I got Teresa Palmer, so. Butler's?
I'm sorry, I thought I put my name on there as well, not just the business. Um, I'll make this really brief, 'cause I believe that you've already heard some, uh, good, oh, by the way, I'm so sorry, please forgive me. I just wanna thank you all for talking to us, uh, every council member, Mayor Hoffbauer. Mayor Hoffbauer, I don't wanna stroke your ego too much, but I do wanna tell you, I do appreciate, uh, most everything that you've done, the pictures I see when you're out there cleaning up the desert and such.
So tell me what you didn't later, okay?
Okay, I'll do that, yeah. That'll be a private conversation. But, um, I do wanna say, you know, I don't wanna be in your position, I'm glad I'm not in your position, but you are, and here it is. It's, it's a, you have a choice before you, and that's obvious, but it's much bigger than I believe many people think. This is a choice that could end up putting you in a place of being a hero for freedom or a tyrant. That's what this is really coming down to. A lot of people are trying to make it about sicknesses and diseases and everything, but it's really about, what is America about? Freedom. Freedom, to make our own choices. I don't wanna keep anybody from getting the vaccine that really wants the vaccine, but I don't want anybody forcing a vaccine on those who don't want it. That's America, or that should be America. Freedom of choice. Freedom to say, "I want this for me, I want this for my family, I want this for my business." And if people don't wanna come into Butler's Coffee because we don't have or require masks or, or vaccines, that's their choice, and I want them to exercise that choice. But I also want the people who don't like these mandates to be able to come in and enjoy a great cup of coffee. By the way, we have the best coffee in the world, but... So again, I do wanna say I appreciate the job that you have and this tough position that you're in. But I also want you to think, all those people out there, that could be your allies or your opponents. We want to be your allies, not just in this, but in everything. So this is gonna determine for many of us, if not all of us, which side we're going to support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you sir. Teresa Palmer?
What happened to Sherri and Mickey?
What's that?
Sherri and Mickey, what happened then?
I can't hear you.
Sherri and Mickey, you had called out before.
Oh, I'm sorry, here, yeah, except for the other side. Trying to keep the piles going here, 'cause we got a couple other topics as well. So then I had, uh, uh, yeah, Mickey, was that the next one? Galena, okay. Galenia, yes. Hold on, I'm sorry. Galenia, come on. Had some others tossed up here and...
That's alright.
I messed my piles up, so.
Good evening. You guys recognize me?
Yes ma'am.
And I, I loved the dialogue that we had, Mayor Hoffbauer. Um, ultimately, basically, what I am simply asking for, and I, and I know that the residents here, uh, we want action, and we don't want just words. Um, we're very passionate, and I know, you know, from the dialogue, I'm a little passionate. But, um, that is all I'm saying, is to take the action. Uh, you have a whole lot of folks that believe in God, and if you stand, we will stand with you, and we will fight with you to the death. But if you do not stand, because we're no longer taking beautiful words, if you don't stand, it will not be pleasant for you. We want our, we want our city to remain beautiful and free, and there's so many economic opportunities for people who stand. And that's all I'm asking for. Make the decision to make the stand and make the difference. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Okay, uh, do you have Mickey?
Yeah, you had called out Mickey before.
Michael Mickey Aliski? And then I think, uh, next one is gonna be, uh, Marla's Morgan, and then, uh, Simeon Betancourt? Oh, okay, that's what I said, I got that other stack. You're after her, okay? I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name's Mickey Martinez, and several of you guys might recognize an email I sent you guys. I appreciate your response, Mayor and Austin Bishop, thank you very much. I wanted to start out with a quote that I heard today. Quote, "It was supposed to be a fight against the pandemic to protect the people, but it has turned into a fight against the people to protect the pandemic." I would like to, and end quote, I would like to encourage you to vote on this ordinance that Palmdale Freedom Coalition has brought to you. Um, take a stand against the tyrannical mandates. We, we want you to not comply with the mandates that are unconstitutional and, um, dividing our city and our community. Um, they're violating our God-given rights of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Masks don't work. They say right on the box, they will not, um, stop the transmission of anything. I'm a school teacher, I have students coming with dirty masks every day, and what is that doing but more harm? It's, you know, masks are different, they're, you know, being worn improperly, all of us do it. So, I, I see people at the store, I see a couple withholding their kid who's not wearing a mask, that just shows me that it's, you know, if it was that bad, you know, the government would be coming door-to-door and telling us what exactly to wear. That's in, in my heart, that, that's what tells me. Um, we voted you guys in to protect your citizens. Uh, we will travel out of Palmdale, we will take our business elsewhere, and I don't want that. I've been here since I was eight, I love this place. I have friends leaving the state, and I'm like, "No, I'm gonna see this through" because I trust in our people, you guys, and I trust our people back here that are standing up for this, and we can do that, and we need you guys to help us with that. Um, they're coming for our kids next, I'm not ready to take that vaccine, neither are my children, so my job will potentially be at risk. But I would like you, our city, to be one that stands out, and people will come here, they will move here if they know we are against the mandates and we are not gonna comply. But instead of scattering and leaving, you know, you guys, like somebody had said, you have a chance to, you know, you guys can make the news, we can make the world news. Our little town of Palmdale, you know, I don't know how long you guys have been here, but I came up here, Avenue S was just, you know, swinging stoplights. I love this place, I love it so much, and I wanna stay here, I don't want to move. But that's what's gonna happen if you guys aren't gonna, you know, work with us on that. Um, you can still get and pass on COVID while vaccinated, so that right there says, like, why are you forcing us? Don't force that on us. It should be a choice. I'm not, you know, and no disrespect to any of my friends or any of you guys, if you have the vaccine, if you made it of your own free will, but if you were forced to it, you know, so thank you, please consider that.
Thank you. Okay, so I apologize for the screw-up on, uh, numbers there because I had some people that wanted to speak on another item, and they got mixed in here, so I think I've got them sorted out here. Uh, so I got, uh, go ahead.
Hi, my name is-
Say your name again.
My name is Teresa Palmer.
Okay.
Um, and I just wanted, and I'm in like the tenth grade, um, I spent my last year of high school all online. Um, and it was my first year too, so it's like, I didn't really get to experience it that much, and it sucks. Like, I really wanted to just like, you know, like, be there and experience everything, and I just knew just as much as a freshman when they asked me, like, "What classroom do I go?" I don't know. Um, and it's, it, I, that's fine, like, I understand that we had to do that. And like, even, like, now, it's like, you have to get tested to go out to places, and it's, it's like, okay, well, I don't really wanna get tested, like, I did that, and I feel fine. I feel fine, I look fine, I can do everything. So why do I have to get tested if I don't feel sick? I don't, I don't understand that, and if I'm, like, I, I haven't gotten sick from COVID yet, and even my dad had gotten COVID, and I was fine, and I was like around him, so I was like, if I'm not gonna get sick, why do I have to get vaccinated? I don't wanna get vaccinated. Like, it's okay if you wanna go get vaccinated, I'm totally like, whatever, you wanna go get vaccinated, you can get vaccinated. If you don't wanna get vaccinated, I don't think that you should be vaccinated. I think it should be your freedom of choice, like, even my friends, I wanna get vaccinated. Okay, go ahead, do it. Like, that's your choice, I think it should be a choice. I don't think that we should be forcing people to get this, especially younger people, like, if, if I like have like zero, like, like little to no risk of like dying from COVID or even getting that sick, then why would I get the vaccine, like? I don't, I just don't understand why we're implementing these things, and they don't even teach us it in school, they're just telling us to do it and follow the rules, and I, and I get told by my teachers, "You gotta pull your mask up over your nose," it's like, "It's hot outside," or "It's cold," or, "I don't want to," it's just, it's just so constricting, and I don't wanna do it. And that's, that's, that's all. Thank you so much.
And I apologize for seeing that. You're Teresa Palmer, right?
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause you had a different item, agenda item on there, so I, I apologize, I was trying to put these in order, so that's, that's why I, I pulled it off, so. Uh, I have, uh, Marla's Morgan, and, um, Simeon Betancourt?
Hi, um, respect, um, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council for hearing everybody here today, really do appreciate it. Um, I've been here since nineteen seventy-seven, moved here because I loved it here, and I still do. And I, um, really hope that you guys do take in consideration what everybody is saying here, what is going, going on with the people. Um, we, we really do want to have our own choice. I know that's something that people have already said, you know, and people are bickering and arguing, "We just need to love everybody, and if you choose to take it, fine, you don't choose to take it, fine." And there, there's just one little thing I'd like to share with you that is on my phone. This is personally from a friend of mine, and I'm going to let you see it, no. It's, she had got the vaccine, sorry, it went out of the, she had gotten the vaccine, and it terribly hurt her.
If you could describe it, because otherwise we're gonna get a picture of that and...
This is what can happen. If you guys choose to do this to people, maybe she's one of a, out of a thousand, I don't know. She can't even hold her phone.
Right.
She can't walk.
Yeah, we'll come over by the mic so it...
She has three children.
People can hear you too, so.
She has three children. She can't, she can't walk, she can't cook, she can't change diapers. She can't do anything for her children. And if you guys choose to go through this and, and do that, there could be one out of a thousand of us that are this way, and that's on your heart. And I really choose, I really hope that you guys choose not to do it. We should be the city on the hill. We should be the Florida, we should be the Florida. God gives us the opportunity to make the choice. You guys have the opportunity to make the choice. And I really just hope that God puts it on your heart and in your soul and in your mind, whatever it takes, angels around you, which I pray for you all the time, and I hope that that will encourage you for us to be behind you. But we can be the city on the hill. We can make the difference. You can make the difference, each one of you. And we hope you do.
Thank you.
There's one other quick thing I do want to share with you, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to do this. I was just coming here to hold the flag because I believe in everything we're doing, 100%. This is my fourth rally this week, I'm gonna be doing more. The freedom, the freedom you surrender today are the freedoms your grandchildren will never exist to know.
Thank you. Simeon Betancourt?
Mayor, so I'm gonna make this just very brief, gentlemen. But, so, I think all of you here would say, you know, know your history. I would guess, you know, you've learned about World War II, you've, you know, know your knowledge about colonial days. You know, you know, you know, the basic knowledge, you know. So, here's what I want to point out. Here we have all these protests of my body, my choice. And what is this? Well, this is women saying, yes, ma'am, it doesn't matter if I've been raped or I don't, I don't want to have this baby because it's discomfort to me. They're, they have that choice to kill the baby. But with these mandates, forcing them, is it, is it, is it, is this still our body? Do we still have a choice with, to say with that? Or do we just have to kind of surrender to you, the government, and say, okay, you know, we'll just inject whatever you guys are just putting here, you know, no questions asked? If you look at, what are forefathers came here for? What did they came here for? What did they came here for? What did they come here for? They came here for freedom. The king in England was oppressing them. The king was taking away their Bibles and telling, telling, no, you can only read this certain type of Bible, you have to read my Bible, you have to do these certain things. And then they fled for a better life, they fled for freedom. Look at Nazi Germany. We have the same things going on here. CNN, some of these other news outlets, they're twisting, twisting the actual stories and putting it to lies. That's exactly what happened in Nazi Germany. They took away the radios so that the way, they couldn't hear what was going on around the world. The people of Germany could not hear what was going on around the world. And they would spill out their propaganda, and they would brainwash these people into thinking, oh, this is what's actually going on, we are superior, this is how it must be. They brainwashed the youth, they had burning of books to destroy the knowledge, erase the knowledge, erase the truth, and fill it with lies and deceit. That's why you had young kids, even at the age of like 10 and 12, fighting in Nazi Germany because they've been brainwashed. We have to understand here that your guys' choices here are crucial. This is, yeah, this is Palmdale, this is not DC. This is not some huge place, this is a, this is a small town, but your small choices matter.
All right, thank you. All right, I have four more slips here, but they all indicated another item here, 10.2. Now, the young lady had put the wrong number on it and wanted to speak now, was, do we get that?
Is it 10.2, not the mandates?
No, that's correct. I don't know what to tell you. So here's, here's what I've got. If you wanted to speak on this item, or if you wanted to speak now, and not on a contract item later, Jaleen Davidson? Okay, come on down. And then what about Betsy Haslett? Was that on this item?
It's the mandate.
Okay, so you're behind her? Betsy, good to see you tonight. Then Lisa Palmer, I'm guessing, okay, all right. So that'd be it, and then the last one is some unnamed person that lives on G3. Looks like G3 anyhow. Go ahead.
Hi, Mayor, hi, City Council, I appreciate coming before you today. We have all been called for such a time as this, and that includes you guys. We all have to stand for what we believe in, and somebody mentioned earlier, we're all going to be accountable for the choices that we make. I have friends leaving in the droves from California, and they are going to states that are standing up for them. They're going to cities that are standing up for them, that are saying no to the mandates. So why would we not draw more if we do the same? This is a skill. There are the masks, the vaccines, should be a choice. And the reason they should be a choice is because they cause, they can cause problems either way. You have people who are wearing masks who are developing serious bacterial infections, both in their mouth as well as in their lungs. You have kids who are having nosebleeds that are nonstop all of a sudden. Okay, you are separating vaccinated people from unvaccinated people. We tell our children to stand up to bullies, to go and ask for help. If they see somebody being bullied, to stand up for them. But now, they feel as their own state, their own city, is bullying them. You're taking away their choice. That is our God-given right. I am asking you, I am actually begging you to stand up and let that be our choice. That was written in the Constitution. There is a risk either way. You have a governor who is telling you that these kids need to be vaccinated next, but he's also standing up and telling you, he has a 12-year-old daughter that will not be vaccinated. I believe that you can do what's right, I believe that you can stand up. I believe you can make a difference. I believe in that light upon the hill, that, that, that shining light, and we can be that town. Yes, I may live in Lancaster, but I shop in Palmdale, I've lived in Palmdale. I lived here when Woolworths and Sprouts Ritz was the main stores, okay? So I, I've seen the change. Everybody has asked me to leave. When my friends left, they asked me to go with them. Everything in me wanted to leave. But you know what? I have to stand and fight for what's right, and I'm asking you to stand with me. I promise you, if you do it right, we will stand by you.
Thank you. Hi, Betsy.
Good evening, Mayor. This evening I met a man who is first-generation American, his family came from Cuba, he's a business owner in Palmdale. I spoke to him, I'm 13th generation American, back to about 1630 or 1640, and if I probably went to the other lines, they could even go further back. 13 generations. Others, other family lines came in around the mid-1850s and even the beginning of the 1900s. People say, oh, my family came through Ellis Island, mine came through long before there was an Ellis Island. They came in 1630s and 40s because of religious freedom, leaving England. The others were involved with clearances that they got kicked out. I am, we the people, we the people, remember your Constitution. All you city officials, all the way up to the White House, have taken an oath to the Constitution, we the people, and so many of them are forgetting that. Please remember that, we the people, no more mandates. I have a friend in Lancaster whose neighbor, 34 years old, about two months ago, died four days after his COVID vaccination. In the hospital, texting his wife, was over two hours later at the hospital, the nurse found him, and the hospital had the audacity to text his wife to say that he passed at age 34. We the people, we do not want these mandates. You are a charter city, you have every authority to stand up to the other kind of government cities in this state of California. So please do that, no more mandates, we the people, you represent us, please do your job for us. Thank you.
Thank you. No, just let them keep coming, that's fine. Lisa Palmer?
Oh, I'm the G3.
Okay. State your name again.
My name is Eliza Ramos.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak. I come to you as a registered nurse who received her Bachelor's of Science in Nursing. As a registered nurse, I am urging you not to enforce the vaccine mandates. This includes terminating others for refusing or asking people to show proof of the vaccine in order to live out their God-given freedoms. I have studied science, and I understand the risks that come with injecting someone with a vaccine that has no results in yet for long-term side effects. I have already seen the short-term side effects in the hospitals, and it is frightening. Is it all worth it when there is evidence of breakthrough cases? My heart breaks to know that those who are supposed to represent us, we the people, are allowing us to suffer like this. We the people are getting fired over this vaccine. Again, there are no studies on long-term side effects, and that is a lot of blood on our hands. Please represent the people of this city and oppose the vaccine mandates as a county of Los Angeles. We, we the people, will fight with you, and we will not let this take over like tyranny. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lisa Palmer, and so did we decide who the blank one is?
Was there Sherry Rogers? You had called her out and forgotten about Sherry Rogers?
We'll go through these.
Yeah, there was a Sherry that, I don't think she was allowed to speak yet.
But Sherry, get in behind Lisa then here. And then somebody's got no name, that wouldn't have been you, would it? All right, somebody with no name here. Last digits, 9553, and a phone number, so that'll be behind you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Lisa Palmer, I'm 11 years old.
Speak up, please, speak up.
Um, I'm Lisa Palmer, and I'm 11 years old. I've lived here since I was just a baby. My parents never, ever talk about leaving here or ever moving. But these days, just sitting down at dinner, we, we talk about it sometimes, and we're scared. At school, the face mask. In class, it's super stuffy, I can't breathe. Kids are always getting bloody noses. I never even get to see my friends' faces a lot, which really hurts me. And yeah.
Great job.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, Sherry, right?
Yes, good evening, gentlemen. My name is Sherry Rogers, I'm a very long, 100-year-old Palmdale resident.
You don't look anywhere near that.
Thank you. I must have preserved well from the desert air. My husband said this is God's country when we moved here, I kind of questioned that. But we've been here for a very long time, we've been business owners in Palmdale. We have a 44-year-old, 44-year-old business, we own a swimming pool company, and yes, we do have chlorine. I often see people going around in their car with their mask on, or in stores, or, and they're alone in their car, and it puzzles me. So I got kind of curious, everybody talks about the mandate, the mandate, the mandate, and I thought, what the heck's a mandate versus a law? So I looked it up, and I know you're all very intelligent, gentlemen, or you wouldn't be sitting where you're sitting today, and, and I just wanted to re...
I had to question that.
You have to question that?
We have a lady too, so don't forget. She keeps us in line.
So I looked it up, and a mandate says that they are quickly implemented to face a specific situation. Interestingly, it says, limited in time, in bold letters. A law is a long-term rule voted by the elected representatives, and that often takes more time to be created. Both are enforceable by the police, but they respond to different situations. So my biggest question that I propose to you, gentlemen, tonight, is how long is this mandate going to go on? I believe we're on 19 months now, and we were, what, two weeks to flatten the curve? And we're 19 months out. And I, I just really hope you do something that you have the power to do, and we have the power to pray for you, to do what hopefully is the right thing for all of us, for you and everybody in this room. I'm not necessarily up here for myself, I probably don't have long on this earth, but I'm, I'm, I'm a mother. I'm Mayor Hoffbauer, I think you know my son, I don't know if I should tell you that or not.
It's all good, it's probably standing in a corner with my brother.
And I'm, I'm a grandma, and, and I don't want my grandchildren, my very little, I think my littlest one is six, seven weeks old. I don't, I don't want them to grow up in the kind of world I've lived in the past 19 months. And they don't, they don't know any better. My, my eight-year, nine-year-old granddaughter, she doesn't even remember what it's like to not wear a mask. She has no idea, she, she just doesn't remember it. So I'll pray for you, that you make the right decision for your constituents, and I hope you pray for each other and for yourselves. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, does somebody, somebody want to claim the 9553, the last four digits of your phone number? Going once? Going to, well? Nice, well, yeah, actually, you're next.
Good evening, I'm the Mayor and Council.
Hi, Tony.
Appreciate your time, I really appreciate you guys being here and listening to us. I was born here in California, my family moved here in 1989 when I was nine years old. I love this city. We used to build forts in the desert and ride our bikes in the desert and catch lizards, and I know pretty, pretty much every species of lizards in this, in this area because we caught all the lizards. I also got a Bachelor's in Aeronautics because when I was in elementary school, I would see the B2 bomber flying, and that inspired me to study aeronautics. I also joined the US Air Force because I grew up in this area. So I just share that too because I love this city, and the city has really inspired my life and inspired a lot of decisions that I've made in my life. And I ask you to listen to everyone here that has spoken up, to preserve our freedom. I'm first-generation American, my family came here from Cuba. And in Cuba, as you know, it's communist, but they did all the same things that we see around the world. Fidel, unfortunately, he has my, my same last name, but Fidel promised free food. He promised free healthcare, he promised free education. But what he, what did he do? He took all the freedoms. First, he took away people's guns so they can't defend themselves. We have the Second Amendment right, so we can defend ourselves. Then he took away the freedom of speech. Why? Because people... Why? Because people can't speak the truth like we are today. And then they take away your right to earn a living. So right now, we're fighting our right over our own bodies. They just start with that and they just keep encroaching into our freedoms, little by little. If you ask all my family members that they literally swam to freedom from Cuba to be here, they will tell you, we're seeing the same things that happen in Cuba. And if people can't come to the United States for freedom, where are they gonna go? Where are they gonna go? So you guys have the power and the authority that God has given you to make decisions to defend us and defend this city. And we can be that city on the hill. We can be. And you will remember, be remembered in the history books. It will be written about you and it'll be rewritten about this city, about everyone here that has spoken, that we stood up against tyranny and we stood up for our freedom. I also own Baracoa Cuban Restaurant.
Name was plugged.
Thank you. I named it Baracoa because my grandmother was born in Baracoa, Cuba. One that, just final, just final thing. I have fifteen employees. I told them I'm not gonna enforce the vaccine mandate. I, I'm willing to lose my career. I'm not taking the vaccine at Northrop and I'm willing to lose my business because I, because of what I believe. So please stand up for what you believe.
Thank you. Mr. Ross? Michael Ross?
Thank you, Earl.
Okay.
That all right?
That's fine.
Cool. Cool. Um, you know, there's not a whole lot more to say. Uh, you've heard so much from, uh, these folks. We call ourselves Palmdale Freedom Coalition because we're gonna fight for our freedoms. We're here, we're gonna be here for a while. We're gonna work with you. We're gonna secure our freedoms that are given to us by God and by the constitution. So what I would like to do just right now is to take a moment to, uh, pray again. And, um, my wife's gonna read some stuff from scripture. Is that okay?
Three minutes, sir.
So, um, I think it's, it was mentioned before, you know what? This, we can all talk about the freedoms and the struggles that we're going through, but this is so much bigger than any of us here. Okay, this is a spiritual battle and I want to put that out there. But I believe in the word of God and I stand on the word of God and it says, we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places. And you may think, if we're up against that, then how are we ever gonna have victory? Well, I'll tell you how, because as for us and a lot of the believers here that believe in, in God and Jesus Christ as our Savior, we come to you in the name of the Lord, the name of the Lord, Jehovah Paratim, which means the Lord of Breakthrough. And we know that we have power in the Lord and so we don't have to come as just mere men. And that's what we're saying, we'll back you if you make the right decision. For the weapons of our warfare are not the weapons of the world. Instead, they have divine power to demolish strongholds. And we are willing to stand behind you with that divine power and with those weapons in the name of Jesus.
Amen. So let us pray.
Yes.
Lord, we lift up these men to you. They are awesome men. You appointed them for this time. We pray that you bless them, Lord, that you give them courage. We pray that you give them wisdom and strength. We pray for their families. We pray for protection. And we pray for our city. We pray for our state and our country. That, Lord, that you would allow the citizens to rise up and to exercise the God-given freedoms and to protect us as American citizens in Jesus' name.
And we bind the spirits right now of fear and oppression in this city in the name of Jesus. And we pray you loose your peace and your courage and freedom, the liberty that we have been given by God. We ask for that. We ask for that courage right now and that covering and protection over us as we stand in the gap and not fight only for this city, Lord, but we know that the freedom starts here and it will spread. Thank you, Lord, for making us that city on a hill and we ask for that in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, so.
Did anybody turn on the slip that didn't get called?
Um, do we have any more speaker slips?
Not at this time.
Okay, all right. Okay, so now here's the sixty-four thousand dollar question. Um, thi- this item is at the end of the agenda. Uh, do I have a motion to move the discussion up and adjust the agenda to bring this item forward for this council discussion now? You have a motion by Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Mr. Loa. City clerk, can you please pull the council?
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt? Councilmember Pedrio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move this item up here right now, but I wanna, I wanna thank everybody for being here. Damn thing. Um, I wanna thank everybody for being here. And I can identify with a lot of you. Some of you are folks that are friends of mine. So, uh, and a lot of you know that, uh, beginning of the year that I, I got in COVID myself. And, uh, a lot of you also know my mom got it. My mom died. So I know both sides of this thing. I got treated. I made it. My mom didn't. My mom also had a lot of other medical problems. Um, based on some medical issues that I had, uh, and consulting with a number of doctors, I made the personal choice to go ahead and get vaccinated. Um, shortly after that, and the doctors attributed to, when I had got the COVID, I got pancreatitis. My numbers are so high, doctors said there's thirty percent chance I wasn't gonna live through it. And today I'm wearing machinery all over me right now because my pancreas isn't working. So, uh, I'm walking around. If you hear this, these things start beeping and squawking, I gotta sit here and push some buttons. And I'm not playing on my phone. I'm trying to, you know, stay awake, so not go unconscious. Um, but then subsequently I got pericarditis, which a couple of you spoke about, the myocarditis, pericarditis. They absolutely attributed that back to the, um, to the vaccine. I hit every single button there except that I was a hell of a lot older than most of the other people who were getting it. But like the doctor said, you know, forty percent of times we don't figure this out. I guess the other sixty percent of the time, I don't, I don't know how many of those to figure out before the autopsy, but they, uh, a lot of us, they just don't know. I'm gonna let you know, I've been in contact with the, uh, city management and with the, uh, city attorney here. Um, ever since, uh, this hocus-pocus the county's come out. You'll remember that we, we voted, a majority of the council voted, uh, we just did not have any confidence in a way the county health department administrator was running this stuff. And, um, I, I believe we all stand by our vote today on that. Um, I've asked the city attorney to look at this. I've got two or three other organizations that I'm the rep to, uh, with other cities to look at where does this, how, how does the county, by what sleight of hand do they pass an ordinance? And how does that apply to an incorporated or a charter city? Okay, so we've got people a lot smarter than all of us in this room right now that are looking at that legal issue to see by what means can we, um, if the council chooses to, to tell the county that we're not, we're not abiding by-
Thank you.
What you do, oh, you'll, you'll, come on, you'll, give me, give me a minute here. I want you guys to know, I've tried to answer each and every single email that you guys have sent me. Some of you have sent me, we've had quite a bit of dialogue on this item. And, uh, I don't shy away from that. And I've had a whole lot of breakfast meetings, uh, on this topic with people. I think most of you know how I feel because I was out there before the sun was up, uh, on front of Northrop the other day with a lot of you guys. So I get it. I want to make sure that whatever we do can stand up to the challenges. The, the governor got his hand slapped by the courts when he tried to do a blanket vote-by-mail declaration. And courts came back and said, look, you've got emergency authority. Here's the interesting thing. Emergency orders are good for only thirty days at a time. But damn near been two years and you have to renew these things every thirty days. There's something wrong. That's not an emergency anymore, all right? Um, this issue seems to have been, this genesis was at the county. And by what authority did, are they putting that on us? Because not every county ordinance applies to the city. And so where's that line out there? So I know the city attorney is, he and his staff, and I'm sure he's got some outside people that are gonna be looking at this issue as well, figure out, how do we do this to withstand the challenge? Because when the governor got challenged, he figured out the sleight of hand. He just went and had one of his buddies introduce a bill. It sailed through committee, ended up on his desk in a couple of weeks. He signed it and stamped it and, you know, the court said, we gotta follow the process. So, uh, I want to make sure that, uh, you know, we're, uh, that we are following the process. But believe me, I think that, I, I can only speak for myself. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I get it. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't have gotten up extra early to be out there with you guys if I didn't think that, that you were correct. And Tony, you, you guys know, a lot of you restaurant guys know that some of us have gone out and we've had those meetings. And, and we've seen how the vocal establishments, it was just a co- I, look, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but I don't believe in coincidences either. And why guys that were, uh, pushing back seemed like they were getting inspected and shut down and cited all over the place because they showed up on social media. So don't, don't tell me that that's not being watched, okay? So, uh, anyways, um, I want you guys to know that we, we, we've got those other contacts that we're working on. We stand together better and stronger as groups. So that's why I'm trying to work with other, um, incorporated and charter cities. You've got eighty-eight cities here. How many of them are gonna step up and help us with this? That's gonna be the issue. It's a lot harder for the county to push back. It's not easy for them to step on one guy. They get a lot deeper pockets in that. So, uh, I just want you to know, that's where I'm coming from. And I'm gonna give each of the council members an opportunity here, uh, to have something to say. Uh, I will, uh, I will, uh, with your guys, can I let Laura chime in here? Ms. Bettencourt, and when you guys say gentlemen, I'm assuming that that's everybody.
I, I, I'm not offended. It's okay.
Okay.
So I, I absolutely do not believe in mandates. Um, I remember, I, I had COVID, um, in March of two thousand twenty, so I had natural antibodies. Um, I did choose to get vaccinated, um, because I wasn't really sure which direction things were going. But I don't think anybody should be forced to be vaccinated. I know lots of people that aren't. Um, they say to follow the science, but I've watched Fauci, Fauci for the last two years, wear one mask, wear two masks, wear three masks. The man is all over the place like a ping pong ball. Um, and like some of the people said, the masks really don't do anything. A lot of people wearing dirty masks. Um, a lot of you all, just so you know, I wear a mask when I'm in public. All of you will see me wearing a mask. It has nothing to do with COVID. It has to do with the fact that I have stage four cancer and I have no white blood cells right now. So I wear a mask to protect myself against everything, including COVID, I guess. But I've been vaccinated and I've had COVID, so I'm not really too worried about getting it. But I don't believe that we should have mandates and I think, I, I agree with the mayor. I think we need to find a way to make a stand on this. Um, every time the business type opens, every time the courts, the business down, uh, the mayor is right. The people that are protesting or are standing up are facing a, a lot of penalties from the county. And it is very suspicious that those who fight the hardest are getting hit the hardest. So, um, I'm hope as the council, we can work together to keep our people employed, to keep our businesses open and to let people have freedom of choice in our city.
Yes, thank you. All right, Mr. Creo? Yeah, he's, he's joining us remotely. Uh, did you have something? Would you like to weigh in on this, sir?
I do. Um, I listen to everybody and I, I thank you for coming forward and then expressing, I mean, as you know, how, how you feel about this mandate. Um, I do believe in freedom of choice. I do believe that we have to be able to make our own choices. And I think that the residents in Palmdale should also be able to make that choice freely from whatever they believe in, uh, whether it be faith or science. But this could be a slippery slope. For those of you that have children, I have four children. And one of the requirements to get into school is that we have to provide their immunization book. And that has been in place for many years for many different reasons and many different, um, diseases, like chickenpox, measles. I don't remember what other shots they required to have. My choice was to-
One, that's mom's job, right?
Okay.
Mom takes care of that.
I, I am trying to express how I feel and I'm trying to let you know, like, let you all know that I believe that you have the freedom to make your own choices. I am using that vaccination requirements for kids to be able to live in school because that is what we parents, uh, decided to do, whether we believe or not, that these vaccinations are needed. They just, I want my kids to be educated. I know there are extensions, you know, religious, uh, beliefs and other things. Um, and this is only for discussion, but I, I do have to tell you that I do believe in freedom of choice. If you, if, if some of you residents don't want to be vaccinated, so be it. But there are laws, uh, that we have to follow. Yeah, America came here.
Okay, folks, folks, so let, let, let's have the discussion, okay? It's our turn now, okay?
As an immigrant myself, like it was mentioned from the gentleman from Iran, you know, we came to the United States, America, looking for a better life for ourselves and our children. Some, some of us immigrants are oppressed more than others in other countries. But that's, that's why we come here, to, to be free and have better opportunities. Uh, in closing, again, this is just for discussion. We're not opening any ordinance or anything like that. Um, if you don't wanna get vaccinated, so don't get vaccinated. That's your choice. I chose to get vaccinated because I believe in the science that there's many, many different, uh, flip flops, like Ms. Bettencourt said, about Dr. Fauci, one, two, three masks, whatever they pay me to be. This just started about two years ago and it's still very, very new for us to know what the long-term effects are gonna be. I listened to the speakers, they showed us evidence from what they believe and what they have, that there are short and maybe long-term effects. We don't know what's gonna happen. If this is, again, fairly new for us to know what the true, uh, short, long-term effects are gonna be. Let's also remember that, uh, every human body is different. We all react differently to many different things. It is not worth risking anybody's life because there could be a one-in-a-million case, whatever the number is. But again, you don't wanna get vaccinated, you don't get vaccinated. I support you in that. That's your choice.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, my friend.
Thank you. Thank you. So, yeah, it's one in a million, but when it happens when both sides hit you, it's a hundred percent. So I'm here to tell you that. So, uh, who else to go?
I'll go.
Okay, go ahead, go.
Okay. Well, first off, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and for those who sent me emails, I tried to respond to all of them. Um, I appreciate all the views and concerns that we heard here tonight. I often say that we don't have a, a lot of par- public participation in our council meetings on a regular basis for a city of our size. So with that said, it speaks volumes when we have a turnout like we did tonight. As you, uh, remember, Mayor just said, just a few months ago, we took a stand against the LA County Health Department in a vote of no confidence. But it's clear by the comments tonight that that wasn't enough. So I feel as, it's my duty as the voice of the people of this city, I must ask my council staff and attorney to do what we can to listen to the request of the citizens of our community. On a personal note, I do believe that medical decisions should be made between yourself and your doctor or a healthcare professional. Uh, there's a story that stuck out last night that I was reading about the In-N-Out Burger in San Francisco that was shut down. Surprised nobody brought that up. I would, I'd hate to see our In-N-Out Burger get shut down. I'd hate to see any business here in our city get shut down, uh, for that reason. So, um, I think that kind of tells you guys where I stand. I do believe in the freedom of choice. And I think that, um, based on the comments we received tonight and, uh, the packet that was left with our city clerk, I, I feel like it's our duty to listen to the people.
Mr. Loa?
Thank you. Aside from the constitutional discourse that we've had tonight, and the first one is in the First Amendment, specifically that Congress, and that means all government, shall make no law. that Congress, and that means all government, shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion. That means the government cannot establish a religion. We've had a lot of prayer tonight, and that's freedom enshrined in the First Amendment. Or prohibiting the free exercise thereof of religion. Or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press. And this is the one I want to address tonight. Or the right of people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. And that's what you people have done tonight. I am proud at your very civil behavior. You've done it in a peaceful manner. That's impressive. That's right. God-given rights that cannot be taken away by any government. And so, we are facing this tonight of whether the city should take a stand against the forceful power of governments that are above us. As has already been mentioned, we've taken a stance regarding the Health Department. We've also taken a stance against the District Attorney of the County of Los Angeles that refuses to prosecute crimes against our people, right? And so, we need to find the way, as the mayor has pointed out, where we can say, we stand apart. We will not force people to take the vaccine. That is not our power.
Just so you know, we, we have not. And, and our staff, we, they've got, they've got their choice. If they get the shot, they get the shot, or they can get a test. But we're trying to make sure that we're right in that, that narrow lane there that, uh, that, that OSHA is requiring us for protecting one another and protecting their staff against issues from the public. And that's why you got the shields and all that baloney too, so.
And I'm expecting that tonight, and I know that, you know, the night drags on and, but it's been very, very useful to hear everybody speak tonight. And for people to assemble in the park across the street and have their voices heard. And believe it, they were heard. But I believe we're gonna try to take action tonight to figure out a way where we stand apart from the County of Los Angeles, the State of California, and if we have to, the United States. But we have to have, we have to have freedom, even if it's from this little city in the northern county of Los Angeles.
Okay, so, let me cir- let me help close the, the loop on this. So, I'd like to ask the city attorney. I know that you have not had the ability, uh, to, uh, do a comprehensive analysis on this. Uh, I would like, uh, I would like you to be able to come back to us at the earliest, um, earliest possible time uh, and, and bring us the alternative. Show us, uh, by what authority the county believes they did this. By what means we have to challenge it. And, um, by what, by what mechanism we can make that statement that the council is, is, I think, uh, feeling, you know, at least, uh, for the most part, uh, feeling pretty strongly about here. Does anyone disagree with that at this point?
I just wanna make sure that, um, that whatever the instruction is to the city attorney include whether it should be by ordinance or resolution.
Right, right. That's why you used to try to be as vague as possible here, that by whatever means, whatever we can do, what is it, and give us those options.
Right.
You know, if, that may mean that we have to actually sue the county. That may- Believe me, I, I have no problem with that. No, no, the mic?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Castro, um, we stood with you in the restaurant issue. And, you know, um, this COVID thing is a real problem. As you may know, and we closed our meeting last time, in the memory of Armando, who passed away from COVID, the owner of La Palma. And it's a real thing. But as drastic as that is, and it's probably the worst thing that our country has gone through since World War II, to be graphic about it. So, it's a serious thing. But it still doesn't invade the right of the individual. And that's what I think this council stands for, for the most part. So, um, so what I'm asking, along with what you're saying, Mayor, is that we have a clear indication as to what we can do. We do have limitations, but we'll do what we have to. And we hear you. So.
Yep.
And it should come back as soon as possible.
Yep.
Mr. Beck. All right? Thank you.
You good?
We, we don't need to pass a motion for that.
Uh, is there, is there any other-
Take a motion to direct staff to do as you described.
Well, pursuant to the direction today, uh, so, uh, for the city attorney, do you have a clear understanding of what we're looking for here?
I believe I do, sir. Thank you.
Okay. City clerk, can you go ahead and just call a roll on that item, please?
Mayor Protim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hathar?
Yes. Okay, so we're gonna work on it. We thought we were standing on firm ground on other issues and it cost us millions of dollars, okay? Uh, so, let's make sure we, whatever we do, I wanna make sure that we're doing this right. So, now, that being said, um, I'm almost sixty-eight years old. We're taking a break, okay? So, we're gonna come back in about ten minutes or so, and I'll give you time to, if you wanna go outside and chat and talk with the other folks out there, let them know, hey, we're on the same page as you guys, okay? And good seeing you, some of you guys today, too.
Looks fine. Looks funny. It's, I'm fine.
So we make a motion and I think somebody's got a second.
Thank you.
Having said that, on July twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, the court issues its proposed tentative statement of decision implying that the defendants, the city of Palmdale, violated the California Voters Rights Act. The Voters Rights Act is to ensure equal representation in local government and communities that demonstrated ongoing vote dilution and discrimination in voting. The action by the courts resulted in the development of two Latino majority districts, and although the action was filed by black community leaders, there was still no black district to elect a black city councilman person for the equity needed to ensure that our advocates, brothers and sisters, had a seat at the table that you both are all we sit on. At the first public meeting of the redistricting committee, the company hired by the city, this city, to reach, to research the city demographics, to re, to redistrict the city, was asked if there were living consideration to adding a fifth district for a black negotiating, for our black neighbors responded that the city gave them no instructions of a fifth district. And there are others issues on the matter of how the company was directing participants to relate and then quote, "community interest." And I recommend most of you, and many of you know or not know, to look up the origin of community interest and how it changed from community of interest, which is the origin of the lawsuit for particularly Latino people in this community. So with all these things in mind, on behalf of the, some of the Palmdale community of color, we ask that the city council direct the demographic company, NBC, as well as the redistricting committee, to not just draw four districts, but five. To give our black sisters and brothers the same representation as we're all entitled to, and I close with this, Jerry Mandarin, Jerry Mandarin has a dark history in this city. And this is why I'm speaking here today, to, to provide equal representation moving forward in this city that I love. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, all right. So we're gonna go back to the, excuse me, we're gonna go back to the regular agenda?
We'd like to make a motion on the closed session.
Uh, okay, this, uh, is this a agenda adjustment item?
Yeah, I wanna move, that's correct, move it up to now.
Okay, so I have a request to move closed session to now?
Yes, and it's been seconded.
Okay, all right, um, okay.
All right, and my motion is that we move the closed session and the presentation by city attorney, the items cited thereunder to Thursday, October twenty-eighth at five P M.
Okay, so the motion is to, um, to move the closed session items to ten twenty-eight. Time, sir?
Five P M, you said?
Five P M, okay, all right.
And, and I'd like to point out that, uh, first of all, I don't know if there was any pulling of setting this meeting after the city council tonight. It easily could have been scheduled at five o'clock and, and we would have had two hours to discuss these items. And instead, we've had a lengthy meeting so far, and I think we can have a freestanding closed session presentation by city attorney, discuss these items on the twenty-eighth and have plenty of time to do it.
Okay, city clerk?
Mayor Procham Ben Court? Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffauer.
I will vote yes, but questionable if I'm gonna make it at five, if, if, if at all that night, so I will endeavor.
And it should also be noted that we've had outside council apparently sitting through this entire meeting that started at seven, so I don't know what their rate is, but two hours at probably five or six hundred dollars an hour. Meaning a enormous amount of money that was expended for them just to listen. Perhaps they learned a lesson in the First Amendment. So.
Exactly, all right, thank you, sir. Um, all right, so we'll circle back. Boy, this agenda looks like a football play card. We'll go back to, I think we're at seven, correct, city clerk? Help me out here.
Yes, sir, consent calendar.
Item number seven, the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar being enacted by one motionless, an item is pulled by the council. Any items to be pulled? It's item seven point one and seven point two.
Seven.
I'd like to pull seven point two.
You know, I'd like to point seven, point one.
All right, so we'll take these items separate. Item seven point one is the infrastructure financing issue. Mr. Gerbe. You're up. Can you give us a brief report and a summary of what we're looking at tonight? Did you have a question, sir, for him that you wanted specifically to address?
Um, I believe I've addressed this before, but Mr. Beck, could I ask you a question? Since I'm within one of the districts that is affected by this, this is the same issue as affecting the entire public, so I can, so I can participate. I do live in, in one of the, in one of the districts, but I think it affects everyone in the city in the same way, so I am not going to recuse myself, and I believe that city attorney will support that. Uh, the, the reason I pulled this is because of the Rancho Vista Boulevard overpass grade separation. I know that you and I and Mr. Behan had a, a good discussion about that this afternoon. I'm just sort of concerned that we find funding for this project. I know we're dependent on the congressional bill that's pending and is being fought over. But if you could explain a little bit to the public of how this E I F D affects all of these projects, but specifically the project involving the overpass grade separation and the other one that's important uh, is the, uh, how it's going to affect the airport. Um, and, and then the third one is Palmdale Boulevard.
Sure, so let's start with the, the overgr, or the grade separation overpass project on Rancho Vista, right? So, um, when we looked at potential projects that could be funded through the enhanced infrastructure financing district, we wanted to make sure that we looked at some of these big dollar amounts that could have big impacts on our community. As you know, that's a main, um, main corridor for a lot of the people that work at Plant Forty-two to access on a regular basis. It's been a project that's been on priority for the city for several years. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that we included some funding to help offset some of the total costs. I mean, we're looking at probably anywhere between sixty and eighty million dollars when it's all said and done. Um, thanks to our public works team, we, we've gotten the design all the way done. Now it's just how do we fund it? So we looked at this as an opportunity, just another, another piece of the puzzle. So if we get some federal funding, if we get some local funding, state funding, now we have another option here to offset, so to help accelerate the construction portion of that project.
So this would be a, uh, part of the overall funding package for that improvement, correct?
Yes, now, now please remember though, that with the establishment of the E I F D, it's not like we get a check the next day. This is a very similar to the old redevelopment project area days, so it's based on tax increment. But again, the great part is that we're not doing this alone. The county of Los Angeles is gonna be one of our partners, so they're gonna be matching the funding that we're putting in to help create this pot of money to fund the whole list of projects that are included as part of that infrastructure financing plan.
So a bottom line approach to this would be that this helps us get this project done on the grade separation.
Absolutely, it just, it probably gives us more flexibility and just another option to help fund this project to help move it forward.
All right, and then, um, one of the things that I believe all of us are concerned with is the development of the airport. I think we have an opportunity now that we are now under the umbrella of Los Angeles World Airlines or airports, um, to build our own.
Yeah.
And so in our discussion this afternoon, um, we talked about the Palmdale airspace being the first item on the first phase. And that this is going to assist in getting, uh, the infrastructure done for, for a, an eventual airport there.
Absolutely, and it's no coincidence that that's number one. We know that this is a high priority for this council and is the direction to get that area developed, again, in a, in a, in a way that will protect the things that are happening at Plant Forty-two and to help them continue to grow as more projects happen. So, uh, that area, which would be on the southeast corner of Sierra Highway and Avenue N, does include some of the land that the city does own. Um, and if you recall at the last meeting, we actually entered into a new partnership with a developer to help get that, that project going.
That's Sierra Highway and Avenue M?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the southeast corner, uh, there, which is again is the, just north of Plant Forty-two runway there.
That's correct.
Again, the idea is, um, through that partnership, a lot of the offsite improvements will be done, uh, through the, through this partnership with the developer. Now, we also have some funds as well that could be available to help get more of those utilities and the improvements to the airport site, to make it a more enticing project for someone to come in to do a joint partnership with the city to ultimately develop the airport.
Good, and, and so again, I mean, th, this is not immediate funds, but, um.
Long term and just gives us flexibility, um, to potentially bond against it in the future. Or, uh, one of the things we are exploring is if, if we know there's a project that is a high priority and wants to get accelerated, there's a potential where we can do some reimbursement agreements with the city, where the city fronts the cost and then we get offset on the back end through the A F D funding that we know we're set aside already for these projects.
Right, and as you know, and, and, and having discussions previously with, with Ms. Sexton, um, large swaths of Palmdale Boulevard, uh, have been undeveloped. And I know that this is within the project.
Yeah.
And, uh, and so I believe that it's not in the first phase, but I think it's in the second phase.
Yes.
That we would be, uh, looking forward to using the I F D funds to begin attracting developers so that we can start putting in some quality, uh, diverse and, um, development along that, along that boulevard, which, which needs to develop.
Yeah, absolutely, and as part of the general plan update, there's, there's more, um, there's the addition of more multifamily mixed-use type of development along that corner, which makes a lot of sense. So again, this would allow us an opportunity to partner with a potential developer to do some of the offsite improvements that may prevent them from built, moving forward on some of these projects. It also is to address, I know one of the issues that has come up, uh, as part of this council's discussion in the past, is exploring the opera, the idea of maybe taking over Palmdale Boulevard at some point in the future. So as since we've identified that as well, uh, it does give us some flexibility there, so i- if there is gonna be some pause that the city has to incur as part of that, which there probably would be, uh, that project is clearly identified in the, uh, infrastructure financing plan. So again, it gives us more flexibility, uh, to finance some of these projects long term.
Right, and I, I think that included in this entire, um, presentation, uh, is some pretty ingenious, um, financial moves. Uh, and, and I was a little bit perplexed about, uh, including incremental property tax revenue allocated to the city in lieu of motor vehicle license fees. And, and you've clarified how that works, but can you clarify that for the public?
Sure, it just, it just, the city gets certain funding as part of the, the way the.
It was a triple flip, right? It was all part of that triple flip a few years ago?
The payback, yeah, so we're getting payments, and so again, ideally, the way it's gonna work though is it would all be straight property tax increment, but it does allow that flexibility. So if we wanted to use some of those fundings that we are getting payments for, uh, from the old, yeah, the, the old triple flip, then we could use those as well as our matching share to match with the counties putting in as well to fund these projects long term.
Very good, thank you very much, appreciate it.
So Louis, before you go, um, going back to the airport discussion, uh, I know that we sent a letter, the Senator, Senator Padilla sent a letter, um, to the Air Force, um, asking that they take a look at what we've been trying to do, uh, the airport here in Palmdale. And there's also been, uh, conversations with the Congressman Garcia also to get their support as well at the Congress and as the Senate level. Um, can, can you talk a little bit about that? I, I don't think that we've done that before in the other three attempts to open the, the airport. And I think that that brings another tool, um, so that we can get the support from, from Senator Padilla and, and the Congressman. Uh, do you know if she, has, has that been done in the past? And I think that the council, um, should know that this effort's also been part of getting the airport going. Uh, can you talk a little bit about that as, as far as what you know?
Yeah, I could, but I think it'd be best, uh, Mike, Mike Behan is probably the expert, uh, in this area, so I'll, I'll hand it over to him.
Councilman, um, we've been working very hard on the joint use agreement. Uh, we've submitted a draft joint use agreement over a year and a half ago. And we've been working with, uh, the Air Force and the, the aerospace contractors to, to move the, the joint use agreement forward. We've, we've continued dialogue, we've continued to press, we've continued to, to meet often. But we're reaching a point where we've decided that we have, we've had to elevate the issue to higher levels, and that's what we're doing through the, the names that were mentioned. I'm not sure we've ever done that before, but we're hopeful that, that by doing this, it'll get us to a decision of yes, we will approve the joint use agreement, uh, or no, but we would like an answer.
And we haven't had the intransigence that we're seeing now, so I think that that, you know, we were able to solve it locally and, uh, and move it along in the past.
But we've, we have done our due diligence, we conducted a feasibility study, we did a ROM study, uh, that we've proven that the demand is there. We have support from Edwards, we have support from, uh, Plant Forty-two. We just need, uh, big Air Force to give us a decision on the joint use agreement.
Um, I, I can say, uh, that, um, on my first stint from two thousand and one to two thousand and five, we did have meetings not particularly about the airport, because I think, uh, Los Angeles World Airline, uh, airports, rather, um, is like a hu- huge elephant impediment to, to us ever developing a successful airport. And so a lot of the political, uh, powers that be in L.A. would not see to it that, uh, that we get that, so they were blocking the path. Uh, now we have Senator Padilla and Congressman Garcia, they're both on. Uh now we have uh Senator Padilla and Congressman Garcia, they're both on on our side because I think we've moved away from LAWA, Lawa, and are now working with the Air Force to try to get this about. So I think we're in a far better posture. I know that in the past, we'd met with uh Senator Boxer, Senator Feinstein, um Con- Congressman McKeon, Congressman Sherman.
Harris.
And Congressman Berman.
Harris as well.
That's right, and uh in in going back to DC to talk about our projects, but somehow if the money ever got funnelled into this congressional district, it was going to Santa Clarita, Valencia. And uh and then we were getting, we were getting some things, I think the Transportation Center is testament to that. But I think that we've stepped it up and and we've got a clearer path. Um and with with the the political strength and and endorsement of our congressional leaders and our Senate and our Senator, we may get this done. And so I'm glad we have this here, and this is along with some other thing that's going to make us hopefully in the near future.
Yeah, we fought really, we fought really hard to keep those map numbers. Um um and Lawa was not being receptive to us. Uh they tried to steal that, but we worked the transportation to uh uh actually um I showed Long Beach and Orange County and several other airports how uh they were getting their numbers sucked away by Lawa. And there was no end to that if we didn't put our foot down. So everybody got together on that and uh and uh I think that that helped change the tide towards the the attitude at Lawa that they were sitting on this thing and and uh that uh they weren't gonna just end up making a huge solar farm out of it, which was what they what they were looking at at one point. So I think that um uh our efforts out here uh to uh to move this thing forward, um I think we've we've gone further, had more positive impact and influence and commentary now, and it is it's stuck on somebody's desk and we need to break it loose, so.
Well, and and the vision of the council and staff to make the decision, hey, let's move the location so it's not on Lawa property. It's on city-owned property, which we control, we have a lot more flexibility, we have a lot more influence on. It made a huge difference, and I again, obviously, uh I can't take any credit for that, I wasn't around. But I know a lot of the people here on the DISS, including Mike, played a big role in that, so.
Thanks for crystallizing that, that's well well said, thank you.
Thanks, Luis.
Thank you.
Anything else or a motion?
I'm moved to adopt seven point one.
Have a motion for seven point one, do you have a second?
I second Ed Corio.
Corio's second, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, seven point two, who is it that pulled that?
Ms. Ms. Bettencourt.
That would be me.
Oh, okay, all right, did you have a question for?
Here, yeah, here's my concern, and and maybe someone can clear this up for me. Uh I don't think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is 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 bad for this event. Uh my concern is when I look at the fee schedule on Exhibit B, and it talks about the two signs for five thousand five hundred dollars, um and it breaks down each thing individually. Um I'm thinking, that's not so bad, but then I read at the bottom where it says, even though we're paying for all this, the contractor gets to keep all of these decorations, it becomes their property. How much more would it have cost us if we had just purchased those decorations ourselves so that we could keep them and use them year after year as opposed to paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for new decorations to be put up every single year?
Yeah, or Councilmember Corio.
Or uh Bettencourt, the um we did explore the the cost of both owning and leasing. The the challenges of doing something for the first time, obviously, is kind of learning as you go. Uh we I think our ideal location, our our ideal situation would be for us to acquire a lot of these assets, store them and use them year after year. Uh but because we're at the location of where we're setting up the decorations is new, uh we have to work out all the kinks in terms of what makes sense uh for the decorations. And we wouldn't wanna go fully committed into a specific setup if we find out later on that it doesn't work. So uh we're taking this approach as the the first uh kind of the first stab at it. Um and then I think long term, the goal, if it is a successful event, is to start acquiring these assets so that uh this isn't a cost that we incur each year. Uh the other important thing to 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 point out as part of this process is uh although we're allocating the hundred up to the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh we do expect quite a bit uh in terms of offsetting that cost in terms of sponsorships. Uh we've already had two conversations, one with the Auto Mall and and one with the IBW. Both are committed to being sponsors of the of this event, and they're gonna offset a substantial portion of this cost. Um and those so far have only been the only two that we've approached so far. Um I think we were waiting to get the approval from the council before we really started getting aggressive about it. Um and it's definitely something that I think once people see it's on and we're committed to it, uh there's gonna be a lot of a lot of businesses and organizations that are gonna wanna support this this event for the city.
Okay, good, I just see a lot of the stuff that I I know that we would use year after year, like the sleigh and the reindeer and the lamp presence. I would love to s- to see us acquire that, something that we could use, that we can use it in different places in the city year after year, so. I was just curious as to to what the difference in cost was, 'cause when I saw that they were keeping everything, the contractor was, I I was kinda taken aback by that.
Yeah.
So thank you for your insight.
No, no, absolutely, and and again, even if something as simple as a tree, we're like, yeah, it seems like a no-brainer, we're gonna have a tree every year. Uh but again, it it was more than double the price and for again, not having all these funds yet and not knowing sponsorships to offset the cost, uh we wanted to be somewhat um um you you know, just responsible and and uh kinda go through it one time, see if it works, great, and then we'll we'll build on it next year and and start doing, uh like I said, acquiring some of those assets for future events.
Can we?
Hey, thank you.
Can you describe for the listeners where this is gonna be at, exactly how this is gonna work?
Sure, so uh we're creating um this drive-through uh Christmas light experience um in the Lancaster Auto Mall. Uh one of the reasons why we selected that area was because of the natural roundabouts that are located there. I'm sorry, Palmdale Auto Mall. Um eh because of the nat- I know, I know, sorry, so. Old habits die hard, but anyways. Um so in the Palmdale Auto Mall, uh it's already set up with uh a roundabouts that naturally slow traffic. And obviously, safety is a big a big issue. Uh we wanted to make sure that people were enjoying it and not driving through somewhere at a fast pace, so it made a lot of sense to be there. Uh one of the other things that we were able to incorporate as part of this is an official tree lighting ceremony. I know last year, we had some challenges in terms of finding a location in a tree and trying to do something. So uh one of those roundabouts made a perfect location for that. So uh once we finalize everything, I believe on December ninth, uh we'll be having an official um tree lighting ceremony. We're working with our Parks and Rec Department to have carolers out there, hot cocoa, cookies, the whole, you know, it's a free event, open to the public. Uh I think we even got the, I don't wanna give away all the secrets, but I think we even got the fake snow machines or the snow machines are already gonna be out there. So it'll be a really fun fan- fun, family-friendly event for the community as well.
And and I wanna emphasize that it's a family and it's a fun event, it's and it's around the Christmas holiday and and the Jewish holidays as well. Um and but it's also a a practical thing and because it's economic and community development. And I know that our auto dealers are um I believe going to participate financially in this, which would mean that we wouldn't be expending the hundred and fifty thousand. And we may also have uh other participants in the community that I think you're reaching out to, and you've got some commitments there. And that's important, and particularly because that's an important sector, uh economic sector for our city, the auto dealers there, that they be successful and they have more people coming through there and buying cars. Um but it also points out to me the fact that sometimes, you know, we we wanna stop or our parent, I I probably shouldn't say stop, but um use as an excuse to fund something that is um as important as prosecuting misdemeanor crimes in this city, that there isn't the funds for it. And, you know, there's ways of squeezing money out of different parts so that we can do something useful to protect our citizens. And that was my concern here, and I'm for this, I'm all for it. And I think it's a spectacular thing, but here's an example of where maybe there's the money to do the prosecution of misdemeanor crimes. That study should happen, we voted five to nothing to have that done, and I know I'm I'm looking at you, but it really is a function of the city attorney.
Yeah, and and the one thing I failed to mention, you're absolutely right, was aside from the support of small businesses, you know, just at the last council meeting, the council finalized the approval of the new visit Palmdale, the Tourism Improvement District. Uh and again, from a tourist uh standpoint, if we grow this the right way, it can be something that draws people not just from Palmdale, but the Al Valley and even beyond. So again, from a from a from a visitor and and then bringing more revenue to the city, it's also a good opportunity as well.
How are they seeing their traffic impact's gonna occur over there? 'Cause if we have permanent displays set up there, how do people get to the dealership set?
So the the s- the roads aren't gonna be closed, so people will always have access in and out of the dealerships. The one um sacrifice that they'll have to make is I know sometimes they'll park their vehicles to display within the roundabouts. So for that sixteen-day period, they just won't be able to utilize those, the the displays will be up. Um but again, access in and out will be will be will be open um both day and night. And again, because of the the calming of those roundabouts, um you know, we're talking to our traffic engineers, but we feel pretty confident that there wasn't, isn't gonna necessarily be road closures because people are naturally gonna be driving slow uh in those areas, so it won't create a big issue um in there. So there wouldn't be a need to close any streets on an ongoing basis. Except for, I apologize, except for the um the tree lighting ceremony, just for that one night to kick off the festivities, that we are gonna have a a road closure be to, so we can fully utilize uh the space around the roundabout, so.
Uh is there gonna be any uh, I I know that there's probably gonna be a lot of promotion of this, but will we have something on the Forking Freeway that kind of illuminates, for lack of a better term?
Yeah, so.
What's going on inside of the Auto Mall?
Absolutely, we're gonna use all any uh any and all promotional opportunities we have that the city uses. Um I think, as you know, the um the city does have a contract to utilize a uh one of the billboards by the mall, the electronic billboards. So we'll definitely use that, the Auto Mall, we also have space on the Auto Mall's um digital billboard, so but you you'll be seeing this quite a bit um both from a billboard standpoint and through print media, social media.
Maybe uh Public Works can use the uh uh the portable traffic uh billboard things they have to to direct, you know, special event.
Yeah, we're gonna have some signings, we're gonna create a map to show kind of what the preferred route would be to make sure that you get the full experience. Uh we'll have proper signs out there, both um you know, from the A-frames to, you know, bigger signs to make sure that people know, drive slow. Uh but but again, in in a friendly way where it's not, you know, more of a um, I guess, a traditional traffic sign, you know, we'll we'll figure out a creative way to make sure that people understand uh that safety is important and kind of how to how to enjoy it the best way.
I'm I'm glad the uh council opened this item up for discussion, 'cause I too had a little bit of a sticker shock, I guess you could say, when you when we saw the price tag and and uh um I am glad that we're bringing in uh money from businesses and sponsors to help help cover it 'cause it is it is a little bit of a of a hefty price tag, but I think it, I'm I'm hoping it should be worth it. I did do a little bit of research into the company, it looks like they have done work with some other mu- uh cities and municipalities. Ours does look like one of the bigger jobs they've gotten, though I've looked at some other cities and their average job does seem re- seem to be around twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. So this this project seems rather extensive for them. Does it go like, how many miles, like, let's say if we're driving down the Auto Mall, like, how long, how how many minutes would the experience be, at least like five minutes worth?
Um it's gonna be a few minutes, I we haven't timed it out yet, but the basically the route would be coming off of, I believe it's Fifth Street, onto Auto Center Drive, going up Carriage Way, and then coming out Auto District Drive. So you're basically doing a loop around all three of those roundabouts to end up back uh essentially where Am- uh you know, where Amazon is there. So it's a few minutes, and again, the great thing too is there's enough parking there, so if people wanna pull over and experience it by foot or walk around and, you know, take the selfies and do some of those things as well. Um you know, they'll have the opportunity to do that, so that would take a little bit more time um as well. And and I think, you know, you know, when we we're in Palmdale, we we go big, so we try to, we try to go and um and go all out and make sure that's a it's it's an experience that people, it'll catch on, and again, we can continue to grow it and grow it each year.
Okay, are we are we gonna be utilizing, you know, when you go to the drive-throughs, it says tune your radio station to this?
Well, the great thing about a lot of those dealerships is they already have sound systems to play music um to the out, to eh to the people that are driving around.
I think he's talking about like a low-power FM?
Yeah.
'Cause I've been to several of these and as you drive in, uh
The music, yeah.
It gives you the story or some music and stuff, you know.
Play music when you're through, and then we can also add messages, whi- whichever message we want from the city.
Well, yeah.
Leaders or businesses who decide to sponsor. But I think that would be a good idea to at least try to have that included, 'cause I've been through a couple of drive-through experiences and I, you know, they have you tuned into a certain station, and it helps kinda like bring the whole experience together.
That that's a great idea, well, we'll definitely look into it, um and if we can implement it this year, I think it's definitely something worth worth doing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good.
Anything else? Mr. Creep?
No, I don't have anything.
Laura?
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm moved to approve the item.
Mr. Loa makes a motion, do you have a second?
Second, Corio.
And Corio has a second, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Eight point one, uh ordinance number fifteen seventy, public hearing in review. This is uh this is the ordinance to follow up on the uh on the uh previous action. This is the official adoption of it. Uh is there anybody in the audience which to speak? Any City, City Clerk, anything?
No, sir, none at this time.
Ikey? Okay, all right, so a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A motion, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Your hearing done, so ordered.
So I, last time here, I brought this, I asked that this matter be brought back because I thought it needed some clarification. And um uh I have some concern about this, I've met with the city attorney thi- this afternoon and previously a few days ago. Um 'cause I was concerned that perhaps um this interpretation of the ordinance would mean that if and 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 I don't, I don't wish anything uh ill towards our city manager in any way, shape, or form. Um but that if something were to happen and he's no longer the city manager, that this language would obligate us to um and uh apply the four-fifths major- supermajority to the next city manager. And Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Beck, you've told me that the uh words contractually obligated to a city manager means that the four-fifths doesn't apply, but would apply only if there's a contractual agreement with any new city manager.
That's correct.
And other than that, uh it would reduce to a three, for example, if if this city manager were to retire or whatever, um then the next city manager would be subject to the three-fifths removal portion.
That's correct, unless you contractually give them an increase to four-fifths.
Okay. Right, and so that would only be uh by contract?
Correct.
Okay, but otherwise, it would it would go back to the three-fifths?
This this does revert it to three-fifths, absent this existing contract now, correct?
And if the city manager uh continues in his in his position, uh then the four-fifths would would automatically reduce as to this city manager on December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Council, I just don't don't mean to interrupt, but I just wanna let you know that uh city manager JJ Murphy's on Zoom call for this item.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, I think we we hashed this out quite a bit in in closed session and then in open session. Um a- a- anything else from anybody?
The uh, just reading the ordinance into the record, if we could, the title of the ordinance. Ordinance number fifteen seventy, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale amending the Palmdale Municipal Code, Section two point oh four point one hundred, regarding procedure for removal of the city manager.
Okay, do we have a motion on the item?
So moved.
Mr. Loa, need a motion? Do you have a second?
Second, Corio.
Corio's second, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right. Item number nine is um, we've got a couple of people that have left the uh of redistricting commission. There are three names here, um and uh um one um one person left was the original appointment of District One. One of them was the um alternate from District Four. Uh we've gotten three uh applications, uh Manuel A. Painter. Uh we have Keyshawn Richardson and Adrian Rico. Do I have a a motion on uh any one of these, any one or two?
I thought this was your, and you would make a recommendation as to two?
Uh these are, these are coming out of Bishop's district, so uh who do you want? I think you.
I'll uh I'll pick Adrian Rico.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second on Adrian Rico?
Second.
Okay, a second, uh all in favor, oh, City Clerk?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna have it pulled. I keep forgetting that we have, have to do it this other way here.
It's okay, Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Uh for clarification, it says here to point to the following alphabet.
For clarification, it says here to appoint two of the following applicants. And I heard only one name, Adrian Rico, is that correct, just one?
So far, yeah, taking one at a time here.
Okay, aye.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion for the, fill the other vacancy?
I'd move Manuel Painter, if that's all right, Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
And Manuel Painter was the motion? Does somebody have a second on that one?
I'll second it.
Mr. Bishop seconds that? Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Benencourt?
Yes?
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
I just want to apologize if you can hear my cat crying, she just won't stop, she's trying to worm her way into our meeting here. Sorry.
I will have my grandson help me with that, too.
I don't know if you can hear her or not, but she's very loud, she won't stop.
We thought you were voting prematurely there for a moment. Okay, item ten point one, City Clerk, I mean, City Attorney?
Thank you, Your Honor, this item is, I think the council's been briefed on it, this is the the resolution required for us to maintain and continue the operation of city council meetings by the remote process. It was originally the governor's executive order at what I would call the onset of the COVID pandemic that provided the opportunity and necessary modifications and amendments to the Brown Act to participate remotely in public meetings. Thereafter, with the passage of SB three sixty-one or AB three sixty-one, through this enacting process, we continue that so long as the existing Declaration of Proclamation of Emergency exists. And I have, if there's any questions, I have Mr. Pletcher taking the stage.
This allows us to continue to do them, and so that Mr. Corio or Ms. Benencourt or myself doesn't have to open the front door to the house and invite the public in.
That's correct, the Brown Act reads that if someone is to participate remotely in a meeting, that they're to do it in a place where there's, both will be posted at the location, the agenda will be posted at the location of where they'll be doing it, the location will be included on the agenda, and the public has an opportunity to participate at that location. There's the exception provided in both the executive order and AB three sixty-one relieve us of that obligation. I will note that this will be a recurring resolution, we'll be coming back on a monthly basis, correct?
Every thirty days.
Right.
Right, okay, any comments, questions, or a motion?
Will be approved.
Okay, Mr. Loa makes a motion to approve it? Laura, was that you seconding it, or was that your cat?
It's August.
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Laura and her cat, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Benencourt?
Yes?
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, ten point two closes the contractual gap on the ordinance that we just had, it's related to it.
That's correct, Your Honor.
Basically, so, do I have any comments, questions, do we need a report or a motion?
Is that reflective of the reduction from four-fifths to three-fifths effective December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and only that?
The way that it reads, I'll give it a moment.
Yeah, it's got the date right there.
Correct, is it until December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four is requested by the council?
Unless the only changes being made on the contract?
This, yes, correct, this is the change to the contract.
Thank you.
And you'll note, because it was previously contractually obligated, that instead of being a Fifth Amendment, so restated and amended Fourth Amendment to match the language and intent of the council.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions, or a motion? A motion to approve this item? I make a motion to approve it, do I have a second on the ten point two, please?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Loa's second, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Benencourt?
Yes?
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler?
Yes. So we took care of ten point three earlier, and we moved to the closed session. So notwithstanding anything else, our meeting will stand adjourned until five o'clock next Thursday, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.